Your voice, your opinion, your community. Fact TV, free speech protected.
Quarterly, and we've seemed to have been able to make the transition from through COVID with Zoom, it kind of works well. We don't get to have our potluck and we don't get to be in the room, but it's, we've sort of expanded our geographic participants that could participate too with other artists from across the country if they want to jump into a meeting like this. And I want to thank Fact TV for hosting the meeting for us and Alex for, you know, controlling all the buttons and stuff so we can just more be more relaxed. I could be more relaxed without worrying about if I'm letting people in or not. I think that for the etiquette, we are going to be recording this. And in fact, we'll show it as a program and share it with you too.
They both.
What's that? And I think probably unless you're going to speak, probably keep it on mute. We don't have any sound background noises. We're going to go through a series of people that are going to do some very quick introductions and to people that are joining this meeting because they'll maybe speak for two, three minutes at the most. And then there'll be an opportunity at the end of that for questions and answers. And we're hoping there's enough people on that we can do some breakout groups of just people getting to chat with each other and stuff. Because I found a lot of the Zoom calls I've participated in for different reasons and with different artists that one of the most pleasurable things is just getting to meet with each other for five or 10 minutes together to acknowledge each other and stuff. So that's kind of the overall agenda for the meeting. I want to say that, you know, Ramp has been committed to hosting these meetings over the years and with other artists in Bellas Falls. And over the years, we've really evolved from a time that we get together to share things, including potlucks, but we're not doing right now, obviously. But also to realize that we're really a constituency, that artists are important for communities and artists have significant economic and cultural impact on the state of Vermont and our communities. And often I think we lose track of that as artists ourselves, the power that we actually have in, in the community and in helping the community. And I think we're going to be significant helpers in bringing our communities through and out of COVID. So most of the time we get together as artists and we just feel bad that we're not selling work. And that definitely is a challenge as cultural workers. But we are really a resource. And I think that introducing some of the people that are going to speak very briefly to us tonight, they realize that. And the great thing about Vermont and the scale of it is that we have access to people. We have access to our legislators. We call them, they respond. We have access to different agencies. And we shouldn't lose track of that power. And that's why I'm very excited to see us developing as a constituency. So tonight with the people that are joining us, it'll speak a little bit. It was Amy Cunningham, and I don't know if everyone's on the screen and maybe you could just wave when I mention your name. But Amy Cunningham is the executive director, executive deputy director of the Vermont Arts Council and has very been significant in the Vermont Creative Network initiative. And then we have representatives Carolyn Partridge and Leslie Goldman from Wyndham District Three on the call with us. We have Sue Westa from Wyndham Regional Commission on the call with us. We have Betsy Thurston who's joining us from the Bellas Falls Downtown Development Alliance in Bellas Falls, the Main Street Program. And we have Lynne Barrett, who's over the years tirelessly gone at creating magazines, promoting the arts in Southern Vermont and throughout. And, you know, can give us a little perspective on what she's noticing now and through COVID and the future. And Martha Fitch from the Vermont State Craft Council, another statewide incredible program that does their annual memorial tours and have been doing a fall one. And we're going to get a little update from Martha where they are, how they've been rethinking things and the possibility of participating in one this spring. And then Jeanette Staley, who's one of the artists, the key artists in town, along with Chris Sherwin and Nick Kikic and Scott Morgan and Claire Adams and Norris Brown that have really helped support these meetings. And we're working on an initiative around a Facebook page, bringing attention to artists in Bellas Falls. So that's kind of it. Feel free to come on and off the meeting as you need to. And we'll get started. And I'm actually going to introduce Amy Cunningham, who's really been great to work with on these projects. And Amy, just want to give us a little overview, two or three minutes, less, whatever.
Hey, everybody. Thank you, Robert, for having me. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces and new faces. And in the realm of familiar faces, just a shout out to Martha Fitch, who's my neighbor here in Montpelier. We're like two doors down from each other. So it's funny to be in this Southern Vermont meeting. Elm Street, Montpelier is representing. Robert knows me enough to know that I've never spoken for just three minutes in my life, but I'm going to do my best to do this for you, Robert. So here at the Arts Council, our priority has been advocating for the cultural sector and helping the cultural sector. You know, we see our role as being kind of navigators and translators through this crisis. We know, I don't have to tell you all, but there's a slew of data, whether it's state specific stuff that we've done, things from the Brookings Institute, things from Americans for the Arts that demonstrate that the creative sector is among the hardest hit. We know nationally that the, as of the fall, more than half of working artists in this nation were fully unemployed. So I don't have to tell you all that this is a pandemic that is affecting our creative sector in incredibly difficult ways. And we continue to be really inspired by the different ways that creatives and creative businesses and arts organizations have been responding and pivoting, to use that overused word. I'll tell you very briefly what some of our priorities are right in the moment. Currently, we're in that vein of being translators and navigators. We are in regular contact with the Small Business Administration because as you may have heard, in the last stimulus relief act, there was this unprecedented bill called the Shuttered Venues Operators Grant. And this is specific, this is also known as Save Our Stages. And so we know that this is going to be a important source of relief for some museums, for many of our venues, for talent agents and folks who promote and present performing arts. And it's been a difficult and uncertain process. They haven't opened up the application yet. There's, they just released an FAQ today. So anyway, we are keeping our ears to the ground to make sure that every potential entity in the Vermont's creative sector that could access those funds can access it. And I'm going to put, because I'm going to go, I'm probably at three minutes now. I'm going to leave you in the chat so that the things that I'm referencing, you can look back on and I'll just give you an encouragement to reach out to me directly at any time for questions or help in navigating any of the particulars available. So the other big piece of our work right now is completing the rollout of our strategic plan for the creative sector. Many of you participated in a lot of really energizing conversations and provided a lot of input at the end of last year. And so by the end of March, we'll be rolling out the full kind of implementation and particular actions and priorities. And are having lots of conversations with the folks who participated in those conversations. CreateVT.org is the hub for all of that work. And I'll also put into the chat a link to some new research that was released nationally about the creative economy and economic relief in, you know, after economic recovery, after difficult situations. And there's, the Northeast Kingdom of Vermont is one of the case studies of this research. So those are the things that are top of mind for me, and I'll mute myself now.
Great, thanks, Amy. Great. And next I'd like Carolyn Partridge, one of our representatives from Wyndham District Three, who is chair of the Agricultural Committee. And the things that just can, give us a few brief words. You're back in it now up there, or well, you're back in it here, representing up there or whatever. So Carolyn, hello, welcome and thanks for taking some time to join us.
Well, thank you so much, Robert. It's so great to be here. And I see some faces that I haven't seen in a long time, Martha Fitch. I think we served on the Cultural Heritage Tourism Advisory Council. So did you, Robert, all those years ago. I see some other faces I haven't seen in a while, too. So yes, we are back zooming along. I chair the House Agriculture and Forestry Committee. And we are, you know, sort of hit the ground running. I have two new members, so we've been doing some background information for them. I am, just so you know, I am a sheep farmer. And my connection to the arts, besides Robert, is the fact that I have yarn spun for my, I also am a spinner, as you can see the spinning wheel in the background. But I have yarn spun at the Green Mountain Spinnery. I get it back in three colors and then I dye. I have a website called Good Shepherd Yarn dot com. Lynn, several years ago, did a great article about it. Thank you, Lynn. But the sweater is an example. It's more crafty than it is arts, but the sweater is an example of what I do. And it's been a tough year. We've had the two Sheep and Wool Festivals that I attend, both Maryland and New York, it canceled. That was a huge hit to my economy. And we've had a drought, so the hay crop was about 50% of what it usually is. So I'm struggling, other farmers are struggling. But what I'm really interested to hear about is if any of you, last year, we spent, I spent quite a bit of time working on getting some COVID money, CARES money for in particular farmers, but I know that there was some money for others as well. And I'm wondering if any of you took advantage of that and would love to hear your input on that. So I'm going to end now. And Robert, it's great to be here and really appreciate the opportunity. So thank you. Good to see you all.
Great, Carolyn. Great, thanks. And, you know, you can add things to me and we can get information to Carolyn if she has to jump off the call, which she will. And Leslie, welcome aboard as our new legislator.
Thank you.
Here in Wyndham, I mean, District Three, and good to see your face. Thank you.
Yeah, it's good to see everyone, many of you I know, some I don't, new faces. So I've had my first month as representing Wyndham Three, not in Montpelier, but from my playroom or my son's playroom and got turned into an office. The internet is not good, so there's a lot of running around trying to make it happen, which is challenging in and of itself. I am on the healthcare committee because of my background in healthcare. So that's what I know the most about. But what has really struck me as now being a new legislator is sort of access. So I might be contacted by constituent because they're having a particular problem. And I contact one of the secretaries in the administration and say, can you help me help this constituent? And within five minutes, I hear back from a commissioner. That's been shocking. I want to use that access to help, you know, the creative economy sort of locally in whatever way I can to help support because it's crucial. It makes us, you know, creativity makes us happy. Music, everything we're missing, music and theater and, you know, all the arts. So I see that as, I think, how I could have some at least impact in its own small way to help you all move through this crisis. So be in touch with me. I'll put my email in the chat and let me know how I can help.
Great. No, we appreciate that. And it really is true. I mean, if any of you have not been in touch with your legislators over the years, they are here, they're accessible, they do respond. If you've never made a trip in the past to Montpelier, to the State House, which you can't do right now, it's a pretty amazing experience in Vermont that we have so much access. So take Carolyn and Leslie seriously. Include them on your list of invitations of things. If you have questions, reach them. It's very easy to go on the government site and get the contact information for each legislator either by name or by district or by town. So thank you for participating and giving us some time, Leslie. And we'll look forward to working with you and collaborating. And we also want the legislators to think of us as a resource for information, for not only testimonials, but to come to with questions and stuff. So we definitely want to be a two-way street. Great. And I'd like to introduce Sue Westa. Sue Westa is down at Wyndham Regional Commission. And I sit on one of her committees around community development. But, you know, we're having these people on because I want everybody to get a viewpoint of how much the arts really interact with, say, the society across and agencies and government and how much they actually recognize we do. And we don't want to lose sight of that connection and that collaboration possibility. So Sue.
Absolutely, Robert. Thank you for inviting me. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Wyndham Regional Commission, we help communities with planning and development issues in many different ways. As Robert said, I'm the community development lead and lead up the community development committee that he sits on. And he referred to some of the guest speakers that we've had over the past year. We've been bringing in folks from various different local organizations, including the Vermont Partnership on Fairness and Diversity out in the open. We've also brought in some funders to speak, including USDA. And we're hoping to incorporate this information into our next regional plan, which we're going to be beginning and update over the next year or so. So at this point, we're really just trying to gather as much information as we can. So if any of you folks have other organizations you would like to share with us, please feel free to reach out with, to me at any time. Also, you might be interested to know that as part of the community development committee, we, I lead up the Brownfields Committee. So we help communities, nonprofits and landowners clean up contaminated sites. Many, a number of them which are in the process of being redeveloped for affordable housing, including the garage project in Bellas Falls and Red Clover Commons in Brattleboro. And we're also working with the Brattleboro Museum and Art Center in cleaning up or at least assessing contamination issues on a site that they're looking to expand to. So we work with communities in many different ways. Some are more traditional planning and zoning issues. And it's a whole range of folks. Some focus more on natural resources.
Another early thing in the Vermont Creative Network and stuff was recognize that every town has a town plan that needs to be updated. Is it every five years or something, Sue? Right.
It might be.
And that, you know, it might be. But, you know, as artists, we should be going and dealing with our towns to make sure there's language about the arts and creativity in the town plan, you know? And that's something we can do on a very individual, local level, help review the town plan. I know Bellas Falls or Rockingham is actually, I believe, going through that process right now. So, you know, on an individual level, you could have an influence to get language more about the arts into the town plan.
Yeah.
Great. Lynne Barrett, where's Lynne? Are you here with us? But maybe Lynne isn't with us.
Hi.
Great.
Hi. Hi, everybody. Most of you I know, I think. So you may know that I used to publish an arts publication, Vermont Arts and Living Magazine. Currently, that has been set aside in terms of a print copy or an edition. It is now just strictly online, for the moment at least. I'd love to be able to bring it back, but it was just too much to do with everything going on with COVID. However, I am publishing or editor of another magazine, Okemo Valley Magazine. And certainly, we're very involved in promoting the arts in that area as well as other things that are going on there. And one of the reasons I'm able to do that is I actually get paid. So it's not me running around trying to find money for the other publication. I'm also working with Bellas Falls. They have, a group has gotten together called The Coffee Clutch. I guess they've been going for quite a while. And we're working closely with Martha on getting as many red dots on the open studio tour map as they could. And they've done a great job at that. Unfortunately, COVID hit right before they were able to explode and bring people to the community. However, the group apparently waned a little bit when COVID hit, but they are back strong and they are creating their own website. They're creating their own Facebook page. And they're working with me on getting stuff up on our website for the magazine. One of the things that, not necessarily because of COVID, but something that's a little more political, I'm involved with, I'm also president of the Board of the Commons Newspaper. And came up with an idea about doing something on civility. We're all facing all kinds of divisiveness in the world, locally and nationally and worldwide. And so working with Next Stage Arts and the Commons, we're putting together what will become ideally a year-long effort dealing with those issues of civility and divisiveness. And of course, we will, we will be turning to the arts community for participation, you know, looking to all sorts of organizations that deal with this issue. And we don't have the exact details at the moment, but I can just say, I can actually read something. We're also working with Landmark College. So what it would be is Next Stage Arts in collaboration with the Commons, them, the Commons, Landmark College and other collaborators through a year-long series of public events that utilize the creative power of the arts, common sense, shared experience, humor and frank discussion with different events skillfully designed to compel the community to come together. So we're really, the whole idea is can't we just agree to disagree? You know, and not shoot each other in the foot, that sort of thing. Anyway, so that's, that's the concept. Early on, we've only had a couple of meetings. And I can put my email address on the chat. And if anyone is interested in participating, getting involved, learning more, please contact me. We're looking at probably launching this. It's going to take a while, probably in the fall.
Great.
That's all I got.
Okay. No, that's great, Lynne. Thank you. And if people want to pose questions, if some of the people leave before we can have more questions, you know, put them on the chat and we can get back to the different people that are presented. Betsy Thurston from the Bellas Falls Downtown Development Alliance, BIFTA. How you doing?
I'm good. Thank you so much, Robert, for having me this evening. Hi, everyone. So I guess I'll just kind of give you an update of, you know, what happened last fall. It was kind of exciting. We got some grant money. We were able to support many of our businesses. Put a lot of money back into town. Our shop local was actually successful even with COVID and social distancing. Many businesses reported higher sales than last November and December, which was very exciting. And our plan, you know, this year, I have a lot of things I want to accomplish. Not sure how many will, will be done, will, will be complete. But we are looking actually for artists, some thoughts on banners. We are going to do a couple new banners for maybe two or three styles of the banners going up the street, you know, on the lamp posts. One thing in our, in our plan this year and for the next four years, we're looking to have wayfinding signs. And yeah, working with, hopefully getting some things at Vermont Country Store to guide people back down to town. And also when you come to town, you know, guiding people toward the poetry and the labyrinth and, you know, different points of interest. So that's, those are our goals this year while promoting downtown.
Great, great. Thanks, Betsy.
I'm just glad to be a part of Bellas Falls.
Right, right. Yeah. Great, Betsy. Yeah, we'll be collaborating some more on the downtown with you and things. It's pretty exciting. Great. Martha Fitch from the Vermont Crafts Council.
She even hates me. So the Vermont Crafts Council. A small nonprofit organization. And even though the title of our organization is Vermont Crafts Council, we also serve galleries and visual artists also. So, you know, when we first chose our name, we should have been told to make it a little bit more inclusive, but oh, well. So we do Open Studio Weekend. And then last year, Spring Open Studio Weekend takes place during Memorial Day Weekend. And sure enough, it was one of the very first events, statewide events that had to be canceled because of COVID. So, you know, this year, we were pretty optimistic going into the signup period, which is still happening because the vaccine, more than one vaccine were rolled out. But then more than one variants have shown up. So, you know, we're just not sure what, what form open studio is going to take. You know, we, at this point, you know, we're also very well trained with social distancing. And, and at the end of May, we have to hope people could be outside to do the event. So we, that's what we're cautiously optimistic or maybe not that cautiously optimistic, just optimistic that some way or another, we'll be able to pull the parts of Open Studio Weekend together. And I'm suspecting at this point that it will not be, it will not showcase as many people as in the past because there are a good number of people that are choosing to wait until the fall to do Open Studio. So I can't say a lot at this point that is firm, except that we, we intend to go forward one way or another. But I was, to follow up on some of the comments from other people that have already spoken. In Montpelier, which is where I live, there's a huge controversy over, and this is not a controversy among elected officials particularly, but it's a huge controversy around people that live in the town, around certain signs, signage that has finally come into effect after having been planned for like five years. And people just hate this one particular sign. So my, you know, my, my advice to everybody was, well, you don't like it. Make sure that you have artists on your planning committees. And, you know, that, that extends to a lot, a lot of the different committees that are planning public works is, you know, make sure you've got an artist on it and don't come complaining later. So anybody that is planning to, that is working on this kind of effort statewide or, you know, locally, good for you. We need more artists on these committees. So, but in terms of the other, the other news, I guess, that we, we received a grant from the Vermont Department of Tourism and Marketing with Amy's help in the fall and launched a program that we, so the grant was for $10,000. And we, we launched a program, an incentive program called Buy Vermont Art. So we had two, two versions. So we had two, two versions of that and with the $10,000, which we couldn't use to pay salaries or, or any administrative costs. We leveraged $54,000 in sales to 48 Vermont arts businesses. So it, it, it really made a difference to those people. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping more money is in the pipeline for that kind of targeted, specific, you know, help for artists, because I can tell you, we're all hurting.
We lost you, Martha. Martha. I think we lost you, Martha.
Uh-oh.
Yep, there you go. You're back. Oh, you're intermittent.
Am I? Uh-oh, sorry. You see me or you can't hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Okay. Well, I actually stopped talking.
Yeah, we can hear and see. You just stopped.
I never do that.
Oh, you stopped? I sounded like mid-sentence. I don't know. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Now, I was gonna ask Jeanette, Jeanette Staley, who's one of the Coffee Clutch artists, to talk a little bit about the project that we've been working on with other artists and the Facebook page and a little bit about the development of that.
Okay. Well, Lynn told you a little bit about it. We're actually not creating a website, though. We're just working on a Facebook page, which is actually up and running, and, and an Instagram account. And they're both in the name of Art and Bellows Falls. So if you look that up on Facebook pa, on Facebook, you can friend us and follow us. If you're an artist, we'd love to have you upload some art onto there. Or if you're having a Zoom event or something art-related, post that up there, create an event. Anybody's welcome to, to use that site and to find each other. Let's see. The cuff, that came out of the Coffee Clutch, which has been meeting for years. It was a spinoff actually of this group, the Artist Town Meeting, when we decided as a little group that we wanted more red dots for the Memorial Day Weekend Open Studio Tour. And so we started meeting and going to Artist Town Meetings and talking about building up that number of dots and we got a lot of artists involved. And then COVID hit and we didn't meet for a couple of months last spring, trying to sort out what we were gonna do next. And what, when we came back together, we realized we, we could still do a lot. And, and like everybody, it involved Zoom, the internet and changing directions. And so we've been working on, as a collective, helping each other, supporting each other to enhance our own websites. Some of us are rebuilding whole new websites, creating stores on websites if we didn't have one already. Tending to one another's Google pages to make sure that we're, can be found on a Google map if somebody were to come to the area. Those are some of the things we're doing. I've lost my train of thought at this point. But it's now culminated in this, doing a page on the, on Lynn's internet website mag that'll talk about how the group formed and what it's working on and have some links to, to the work that we're doing in our studios while COVID rages on.
Right, right. Yeah. Yep. And I don't know if any of the other artists in the Coffee Clutch want to jump in with any comments? And Chris or Nick or Charles or Claire or not?
I can jump in for a second. Yeah, I think Jeanette and Lynn both covered it. Hi, everybody. Chris Sherwin, local glass artisan, longtime supporter of Vermont Craft Council and the Artist Town Meetings and all that. So you're all looking very familiar. Thanks for everybody for joining in. COVID kind of, I don't know, well, it slammed everybody, but I think it also gave us time to think about how we could progress in any way that we could. And part of it came from our, our meeting once a month to, well, we've got Zoom and everything is Zoom. My wife's on Zoom all day. My daughter's on Zoom in grad school. What, why don't we meet that way? And so that, the Coffee Clutch has kind of sprung out of that. And then a few of us were taking Meet the Maker courses and getting some various funding or anything we could. So we started by just generally networking among ourselves and trying to support each other any way we could, whether it was, you know, we looked about posting for each other, sharing posts on Instagram and Facebook. And then out of that, we said, why don't we make a collective page? And so that was kind of the impetus for that. It all kind of came from the Vermont Craft Council and Open Studio Weekend. It's all kind of trickled down. And how do we become more of a presence? And with COVID not allowing us to gather people, we started gathering on Zoom and build the list that could still in person safely. But, so it's all, we're all evolving still. It's all a progression. And we're working the best we can to support each other. And so it's great to have some state representation and gallery owners here. We really appreciate it. Betsy, it's great to have you on board with BIFTA and, and being very supportive of the arts. That's really appreciated. So I'm at the studio most days. People are welcome to come by if they dress in, in mask. And I'm happy to talk about it more, or you can contact me anytime too. But it's, it's been great. I mean, there, there definitely have been some positives that have come out of all of this. And if, you know, whether it's getting that email blast that they've been sitting on for two years or updating the Facebook page or websites, I think all of us have been doing a little bit of that to trying to survive. And well, if, if we need to do it online, since all the shows are having to be canceled, then that's probably a good effort and it's gonna benefit us. We kind of have to go that way anyway. I think a lot of our, we're realizing that if the galleries can't support us wholly or the shows wholly, then how can we also survive, you know, individually and cooperatively and collectively amongst each other? So.
The other thing that I wanted to say too, thanks, Chris. You reminded me that. So at this point now, we've been working on this for several months and we're sort of, part of the impetus for the article is to think about Bellows Falls as a destination, a place for, to, to find artists, to find interesting people, an interesting place to live, people who might work remotely, to think about Bellows Falls, Vermont as a place to come to. And so we've been thinking about the, how to use advertising or the Facebook page to capture a wider audience, to reach into places in the country that maybe, may have a sort of sisterhood, but hadn't thought about Vermont before. And so that's the other interesting thing to think about with, like, representatives or BIFTA or, you know, some of the other, and Lynn, the other. How can we do that together, you know? Expanding our.
Well, I think, you know, Vermont very much is, is, is out there in a lot of ways now, you know, in terms of on the radar screen because of how it's acted with COVIDs and, and the keeping it down and the, the governor's pretty good aggressive policies on that. And also, you know, the, you know, COVID has evolved us, you know? We're not going to go back to the way things exactly were. And in some ways, that's positive and in certain ways with the Zoom and the way that now we can reach out to larger audiences. And then there's a whole new way of rethinking immigration to Vermont with the people that are now coming to Vermont or the people that are investing or buying places here. And I know for years, you know, we've been an aging state. And everyone was wondering, how are we gonna do this? And how is COVID the one that's kind of changing our demographic a bit? You know, I don't know if Sue West from Women Regional has any statistics or thoughts about it. But, you know, it's, we have to rethink immigration and how do we integrate people that are coming here? And, and welcome them and also use them as a, use them, work with them as a great resource, you know? An economic and also a thought resource and a, you know, something that's coming into our communities. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts about that.
We don't have that information yet. We're anxiously awaiting it, but we have a lot of anecdotal information. And as you know, in our community development committee, we've been discussing this issue because not everyone has been civil to of the outsiders and that's a challenge.
And even the New York Times reported on it.
Oh, yikes. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send you that story if you don't have it. So I, I could just say one thing about how, and how wonderful it is that the Bellows Falls artisans got together and really created this, this co-op group. That doesn't always happen. And I think it's, you know, power in numbers. And I think that that, you know, is just, you know, hats off.
Great, great. So unless anyone has any immediate comments, I, on different calls I've been on, I've been kind of like, and within the Idea Jams and the Vermont Arts Council, working on there's some strategic plans. At some of the calls, we would just randomly be sorted out into these breakout groups. And we don't have necessarily a particular topic we have to discuss or theme, but I think it'll give us an opportunity to just kind of meet each other and introduce ourselves to each other and talk. So I, I kind of, if people are up for it, I'd like it.
All right, Robert, time to, time to bring us all back together.
Well, here we are. How many people did we lose in that spinoff there, you know? But, yeah, yeah. But I, I sort of envisioned this as maybe the way the future Artist Town Meetings might go. It's, or not Artist Town Meetings, but, you know, do we have monthly things like this where we just get on? And whoever's on the group, we could just talk or spin off into other groups. I don't know. I, I always find it's very interesting and rewarding to kind of listen to other people talking. So I don't know, what, what do people think about within their little groups they spun off into?
I really liked the idea. It was good. I, I didn't know who was gonna pop up on the screen. And, and we, we, it was just three of us in our group and we, we got to know each other a little bit and share some information. It was good.
Good show. Thanks, Robert. Yeah. So I don't know, did anything come up that people want to talk about some more? Do you want to do another little spinout group into two or something? Or do you want to end the meeting early? You know, we have a lot of options.
Did we lose everybody else?
There were a couple more. Frank, did you want to just, are you still here? Frank, maybe.
Yeah.
Why don't you mention your building? That was, that might be of interest to the whole group.
Oh, well, I have a building in Saxons River that I'm hoping to make into an artist maker's space. Particularly on the sculpture, sculpture end. Mainly for, you know, it's, it's our Seven Pleasant Valley Road and it's across from Ian Eddy's building.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Frank, you bought that building?
Yes.
That's cool. That's, that's a perfect building for what you do. I mean, that's a real industrial strength building.
Well, yeah, it has three face power and, yes, it, it can be, it has potential, a lot of potential.
Yeah, I like it. So Frank, like where are you kind of in the possibility of that? Or what would, you know, is it like up and ready to go? Is it this? Is it that? I mean, how would people be helpful? Would it be helpful for you sometime to present a little talk about it with some photographs and get people talking more? Or what, what would be helpful to you?
Well, it's not up and running yet, but I mean, it's, it's kind of dead in the water right now because of COVID-19 and lack of funding to finish working on some of the work that needs to be done on it. But yeah, like I said, there's a lot of potential in the building, in the space. It's two buildings actually, next to each other. Well, yeah, it has a, you know, has a new furnace and, and it had some roof working, work, work done on one of the buildings. And, but it needs a lot more, needs some new windows and a lot more attention. And the space has been broken up a little bit, so we're not heating the whole thing of the biggest, biggest open area. But people are welcome to come and take a look at it if they want to and see it. Yeah. Well, it probably would be better to do something, you know, have a presentation too, like you were talking about, Robert.
Yeah. Well, even if it was informal, if you could do like a video tour of it. And it might be interesting to do a group of, a talk sometime about potential spaces at different levels that they exist, you know? And, you know, Betsy, whether it's something in the downtown group and it doesn't, it could just be from, from near reality to dreaming, but it could be interesting to put maybe four different kinds of informal presentations together and let people talk with you, if that would be helpful, you know?
Right, right. I'm very open to all input.
Right, okay. Cool, cool. Anyone else have things in their groups they want to share or have people talk about?
Jean's got something.
I, I have some ideas for public art downtown that I wanted to run by people. And I talked, you know, with Lynn and Ellen and they said I should go to BIFTA. But you know those stairs right downtown, the curved stairs that go up to Hedy Green Park? They have those recessed panels. And the stairs right now, they could be so beautiful and they're so ugly. What if we had a woodworker cut wood panels that fit in those recessed squares? And different artists made a painting on each wood panel and then concrete screws right in there? It would look beautiful. It would, you know, artists could sign their work and get a little publicity and it just would, you know, be more visibility for artists in town.
Yeah.
There's my idea.
Betsy? Can you hear us, Betsy? Ms. BIFTA?
I love.
Betsy, we're having a little, we're having some, Betsy, we're having some trouble with your audio. It's, something's not working. Is there, have you been having trouble with it? Because it delays your voice and breaks it up.
Turn off the video. Can you hear me better now?
Oh, gee.
No. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll second that. Fact TV is a terrific resource and Alex and Colin and everyone down there are really great. And you know, it's definitely you're on our, you're on my radar screen and you're on, I think, our Coffee Clutch radar screen and stuff. So we're very lucky to have, you know, you guys down there and the creativity that you have around things too. So you're definite, definite resource. And Jean, I didn't mean to kind of cut off that conversation about the public thing. Betsy, I see you're there. Do you think your audio's any better? Do you want to try saying something?
I just, I just wanted to say she wrote in the chat. She thinks it's a great idea.
Yeah. No, I think that's a conversation to definitely bring forward and it's something with Betsy at BIFTA now to coordinate a, a thought about that. And I'd love to have more of a discussion about that. And especially if it was even panels that, like you said, could be very simply screwed in and stuff. And then they could be changed, you know, too, you know, it, it with things unless we want, or it could be sort of semi-permanent. But I think that would be a really great public art project to pursue with the partnership with BIFTA.
Yeah, you'd probably have to run it by the trustees.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's a process. Oh, yeah, this doesn't just happen. You know, it is, it would be a process and there's planning and there's, yeah. But BIFTA as a partner would be a great partner.
But do any other painters, would you want to paint some, one of the panels?
Oh, sure.
Yes, Scott? Yes, Jeanette? Yes, Claire? Oh, good. Awesome. Okay, cool.
Well, maybe the schools could be involved too, because that, that would probably bring the town in if at least the high school, maybe the middle school were involved.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, that's another great discussion.
Alex, just one quick, are you still doing trainings, Alex, at, at Fact? I, that's why I wasn't sure just with the COVID, um, if you were. Okay. Well, thank you for that resource, sure.
So our little group talks about marketing.
Yes.
Marketing and how much we hate it, but also how important it is, but also the shift about um, it's interesting and now Amy's gone, but that they're thinking about how to coordinate, which is something we've talked about in our coffee clutch. How to coordinate more with um, Vermont Vacation and Tourism, which I thought was, you know, it just makes me so happy to hear them talking about that and thinking about the whole state. And, and the Arts Council, you know, integrating the arts into the marketing and state plan.
Yeah, yeah. It, it, it's been one of those long-term struggles, you know? It's like what we always face as artists, we're sort of some kind of icing on the cake as part of the real movers and shakers. And um, recently, well, within the last year, um, Jody Freed, who's the Catamount Arts in the Northeast Kingdom, has been uh, appointed onto that board of Tourism and Marketing and he's a really good, strong voice for the arts. So I think once again, and Lynn, it's, you know, we, we, we've been through this discussion forever. It's always been a problem, you know, beyond, you know, ski and recreation, um, having them invest more money in the arts per se.
Yeah, I mean, they do, they do do some PR around the arts, but they do not spend any advertising money, at least they haven't. And that's the big thing. You know, they will include it in a couple of sentences in a press release or something, but they haven't pushed it. I mean, I have friends that come up from New York and they're like, oh, my God, I never knew this was such a, you know, so many artists. And that's when actually second homeowners love the arts. It's one of the things they want to see. They want to see the culture. And it's right here. We talk to realtors. It's one of the things people ask.
Right, right.
The first thing is how fast is the internet?
Yeah, yeah. And if, if, if people aren't, could they mute themselves? There's some background noise, someone's radio.
That's me, that's me.
Oh, no, go, go, click. Come on. I guess you can't. There we go. Okay, great. Um, yeah, no, no, no. So that's a real challenge and stuff, but there's some inroads there. Absolutely, absolutely. Anything else come up in conversation or anyone wants to jump in with anything? So Greg? Pick on you.
Hey, Robert. Now, we were just, we talked a little bit about the idea that uh, people are looking for art for their walls. Um, they've spent enough time at home that they're looking at bare walls and realizing, oh, hey, let's finally get something to put on that wall. So that, that's a positive thing as far as the arts go too. So
yeah, thanks. Thanks for doing what you do. No, thanks you. Greg Ward, you should introduce yourself. I mean, probably everyone knows you, but if not, but just here, where do you get reshuffled to?
Okay. Um, we have Vermont Artists and Designs in Brattleboro and have been around a long time and happy to represent an awful lot of good artists and craft people. Y'all are doing a great job. So let's figure out how to even get your work out there better for everybody.
Great, great. So any, any big lasting thoughts? Otherwise we could wrap this meeting up earlier.
Uh, just one question for Martha, I think. Um, so I was talking with, I think, Marion C. Schultz on our Glass Guild meeting. So we just send dues and participation and get that money to you as we can at this point? And then we'll just see where we end up as far as open studio?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, definitely. And um, people that let me know that, you know, that we're signed up for open studio last year uh, have a credit for this year. And we're just going to play about here and we'll be in contact frequently. I think the one thing I forgot to mention is that, that we'll probably be having either a weekly or twice a month um, meeting for anybody interested in talking about open studio and to share ideas and uh, hear what you've got planned.
Okay, that would be great. So those links will come out in the regular email blast. Yep. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Robert, I'd like to do a shout out to somebody.
Sure.
To Kimberly Gilbert from the neighboring Vermont Arts Council Zone, which is just north of us.
Yeah.
Kimberly Gilbert, you see her picture, her image there. She, that's that area around whatever it is, that, that whole three counties region.
Yeah, CBT region, yeah. Thanks, Charles, for reaching out and inviting me to join your meeting. Um, so I'm Robert's counterpart in a, in a different zone and I'm also an Economic Development Planner at our Regional Planning Commission. So that's I was throwing things about planning in the chat there. Um, but we have so many similar, um, you know, similar needs and similar ideas between the two zones. So it was really, really nice to sit in on this and, and get to chat with some of you all. And um, we can keep looking for, you know, ways to collaborate and, and partner together in some of these efforts where it makes sense. So I think um, in addition to all of, you know, the work within the zones that we do, having occasionally these, these cross zone conversations is really useful. So thanks for the invite.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Kimberly, yeah. Kimberly's referring to this is the Vermont Creative Network. It's the Arts Council Initiative that has a state kind of divided, kind of divided into six zones. And our zone right now is Bennington and Wyndham County, and I'm a coordinator for that. And Kimberly is the coordinator for the zone to our north, which includes Springfield. It's, it's interesting because, you know, it includes Springfield and what, what are the three counties? Like what, what are your zone? What does it include again, Kimberly?
Yeah, it's got um, Winter County in, in orange. Um, but it's, it's, you know, the, in Vermont, all the, you know, batteries don't ever match up. But our, our zone for the Vermont Creative Network happens to match up with our Economic Development Zone. So we've got pretty active um, regional planning commissions and the uh, Economic Development Corporations.
Right, 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 right. And in ours, we have the Wyndham Regional that sues from, then there's a Bennington Regional um, thing too. But yeah, no, I, I, I sort of think of it as boundary, boundaryless. And though it's, yeah, it's, I'm sorry that Amy isn't on the call, but it'd be great if the, the, the zone coordinators could kind of like suggest maybe meet and cash over some things uh, too. It's about time for one of those meetings.
Yeah.
Be great. Great. Thank you, Kimberly, for participating. Right. So on that happy note, anything, Jeanette, Frank, Claire? The people we can't see, Nick or Scott, uh, Mark or Tom? And you know, thank you for participating. I think there's some ideas that came up.
Thank you, everybody. This was a great conversation. Thank you, Robert. I, you know, I was quiet and sitting in my car, but listening, listening to everybody was um, it was a great synopsis and I feel like connections were made and uh, you know, we were kind of pushing the ball forward, pushing it downfield, which is great. I mean, it's, it's encouraging even um, with all that we're up against with the, with COVID and, and um, you know, we're having to do things by Zoom. I think that we're some connections made tonight. So that's really good. So thank you, Robert, for organizing this and for everybody for joining.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm really serious. I think we are really a resource, you know, as much as we, we struggle as artists and creatives, but um, we are a resource and we are a constituency. We've got, we've got some power. I want to kind of try to work and build that with everybody from all different viewpoints, you know, and stuff. So anyway.